Do you rise and join in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the moment of silent prayer.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
Yes. You had three executive sessions, and you didn't say what they were for. Could you clarify that?
I believe they are either personnel-related or legal.
Yeah, this is the one.
Interesting.
Yeah, but that's not the requirements under state law.
So, it says one at 10:30 to 11:20. On October 7th. I believe both of those were regarding terms and conditions of employment of current employees. And the one on, are you also referring to the one under the elections board?
It says other executive session held on October 8th for potential litigation?
Correct, so that would be conferring with legal counsel to obtain legal advice concerning potential litigation.
What kind of potential litigation?
Well, it would be involving something under the elections board, so.
That's elections-related.
Elections-related litigation.
Okay.
What? Yeah, we know the camera's not working.
Yeah. All right, unfinished business. Consider approving the minutes of September 26, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, entertain a.
Yep.
Motion to add an agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, finished business?
This is under unfinished business. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to include consideration of rejection of all bids on the Veterans Center received on October 8th, 2024, and submission of a new scope of work by Architect to be rebid relative thereto.
Sure, I'll second that. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries to add that, so now we will formally reject.
Well, and so, Mr. Chairman, I move to reject all bids on the Veterans Center received on October 8th, 2024, and to submit a new scope of work by Architect to be rebid relative thereto.
Second.
And I think this is just based on, we got the bids in, we took a look at them, and it's really not.
It's just a recommendation of our Architect, basically.
Yeah, I mean, and we didn't receive that until yesterday, right? So, this is something where, you know, we need to look at the bids and make sure it's within what we feel is appropriate, and we always retain the authority to do that, so I think that's.
That's second guessing whether we're going to do the facility or.
No, 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 no.
Make sure that all the numbers add up.
Correct.
We feel that it should cause for our picks, we feel a cause.
Yep.
But we're also up against a gun because we have two big hurricanes or building supply.
Potentially, yeah, so, I mean, it's, but if this motion is adopted, this will allow us to get the Architect to help us.
It's good to rescale, re-look at it, get it rebid. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
New business, consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Poll Worker Services for maintenance services at the Bradford County Correctional Facility for $5,236 annually effective September 26, 2024.
So moved.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
What type of maintenance services are these, Michelle? Do you know for Poll Worker?
Kitchen equipment.
Is that the kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All right, we voted, correct?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider appointing signature authority for the PCCDE grant system for Bradford County to Michelle Shun, Chief Clerk, and authorize the Chairman to sign.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Louise Luck for grant consulting services for the Bradford County Public Defender's Office effective September 30, 2024, and authorize the Chairman to sign.
Second, and Michelle, is this for, is this like a mitigation specialist? Was this what this individual was, Louise Luck?
This was for the murder case.
This is relative to the capital case, so this would be somebody helping Pat Byrne?
Go ahead, all right. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approving the 2025 holiday schedule for the county. Make that motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
And so, this is just to clarify, the holiday schedule is the addition of one additional holiday, is that correct? Martin Luther King Junior Day?
Yes.
And then, the Good Friday holiday that had been observed in past years, that's going to get moved at least for this year to be the day after Christmas? So, the net is, this is the addition of one day?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider appointing marine gearing to the Children and Youth Advisory Board for a three-year term effective October 1st, 2024.
So moved.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Consider approving the purchase of service agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and the following providers per the agenda effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025 inclusive. Make that motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approving the amendment agreement for professional services between Bradford County Children and Youth Services, and it takes a village incorporated effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025 inclusive.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Consider accepting concerns proposal for trauma-focused therapeutic services effective October 10, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving an amended contract between Bradford County Mental Health Program and Northern Tier Counseling effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31, 2024.
Second, and Michelle, is this a pricing change, or is this a scope of work change?
Scope of work.
It's a scope of work, okay.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approving provider contract between Bradford County Early Intervention and Peak-to-Peak Therapies LLC effective September 25, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving contract between Bradford County Drug and Alcohol and Sage Action Consulting effective October 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
So moved.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving a letter of agreement between Bradford County Drug and Alcohol and St. Agnes School effective October 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Make that motion, and St. Agnes does a wonderful job with their children.
I'll second that, and just to confirm, so this is to put a counselor from drug and alcohol into the school and to provide some services for trainings and education, is that what this concerns?
Should be noted that Doc's kids go to the school.
Yes, they do, I'm proud of it. They do a wonderful job.
Excuse me.
What's that, why is that?
You're providing services to the school, and you're voting on providing services that where your kid goes. Community should just know, that's all.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approving a letter of agreement between Bradford County Drug and Alcohol and Endless Mountains Transportation Authority effective October 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approving the contract between Bradford County Human Services and Supporting Area Families Every Day or Safe effective October 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford County Human Services and MGS Consulting LLC effective October 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Consider the hires and transfers from Andrew Jelliffe down through and including Paul Farner.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Other, Nanette McClinko has been appointed in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas to the position of Administrative Assistant I to the Court of Common Pleas in the Office of Probation effective October 7, 2024. And we're going to recognize Dakota Bellinger for winning the Mary Kunkel Award of Excellence for classes 6, 7, and 8. This is the third year in a row that a Bradford County DRO staff member has won this award.
We have been.
You want to share a little bit about it?
So, the Mary Kunkel Award of Excellence is presented to up to five people annually in the state of Pennsylvania from the Domestic Relations Association of Pennsylvania. I'm humbled to receive the award. What it indicates I've done is it's presented to individuals who demonstrated a commitment to the PA Child Support Program by developing innovative and successful programs in participation in GRAP. It was named after a former director in Carvin County who served through 2016, who obviously encapsulated a lot of these ideas and did a lot of great work for the children investment. Do you want a picture with the award? It would be very helpful.
So, I'll just say this, I mean, you've worked here a while. How many years did you work there?
Oh, five years, 10 months, and seven.
How many hours and minutes have you added down to that? Well, but, you know, I don't, I don't work in the office with you, but I see how you handle yourself throughout the court. You've always been very professional. Not a surprise you get this award, that's for the.
Yeah, no.
So, congratulations, job well done.
Very proud of you.
Yep, and we have a certificate from the county commissioners. This certificate has been granted by the Bradford County Board of Commissioners. In due recognition of Dakota Bellinger, we are honored to recognize Dakota as DRO enforcement officer for his dedication to serving the community of Bradford County and receiving the Mary Kunkel Award of Excellence from the Domestic Relations Office Association of Pennsylvania. Your dedication and loyalty to Bradford County is greatly appreciated, signed by Bradford County Commissioners. When we're done, we'll get a picture out. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Judge, you must be doing something right. I mean, it's the third year in a row?
He's done all the work. I'm proud of him all.
Feeding the generals, feeding the troops, so congratulations to all of you.
Great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture later. All right, the executive session was held with the county solicitor on October 7, 2024 from 9:37 to 9:41, to discuss legal matters. And again, an executive session was held on October 7, 2024 from 10:30 to 11:20, and from 11:45 to 11:52 to discuss personnel matters.
I was looking for Matt. All right, there he is.
And we have Matt Allen, our treasurer, as a member of the salary board. There is no unfinished business. New business set the salaries and grades from Andrew Jelliffe down through and including Paul Farner. I'm going to get that motion for the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? I'll stand. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, election board. There is no unfinished business. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise the date, time of the pre-election day testing, which is testing of all the equipment, all the systems, and we encourage people to please show up and witness this testing process.
I make that motion.
I'll second. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider authorizing the director of elections to appoint poll workers as needed at county polling locations that have vacancies to serve on the election board for the 2024 general election on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, effective October 31, 2024.
Second, I just want to just clarify, my understanding is, is that the reason we do this is by law up until that week before, anytime before that, the Board of Elections would help to work through appointing, but in that week after, that week leading up to it, kind of because time runs short, the law permits you as the elections director to appoint people in that capacity, is that correct?
Yes.
And we would not have another meeting of the commissioners or the Board of Elections unless we did a special meeting between October 31st and November 5th.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise the date, time of Bradford County Return Board and Bradford County Elections Board.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise the polling locations and times for the general election on November 5, 2024.
So moved.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise the general election candidates and offices to be elected.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consider approving the election day schedule for November 5, 2024.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Consider approving the increase in rent paid from $50 to $100 for the following for the use of the facilities for election day polling locations named to those facilities per the agenda.
So moved.
Second, I'd just like to add that, you know, their costs have gone up, you know, cleaning, electric, plowing, hopefully, whatever they have to do, the setup. So, we appreciate very much all these, you know, patriots that allow us to phone in their facilities. We appreciate it very much. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And yes, we do very much appreciate them allowing us to host election activities in their facilities.
Mr. Chairman, point of procedure. If, if we wish to schedule a special meeting of the elections board, do you require a motion to schedule that, or can we just schedule?
We just advertise it.
We can just advertise it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I would like to have one scheduled for the afternoon of Wednesday, October 16th, a special meeting of the Board of Elections to discuss and take action on the county's policy relative to the voter's ability to cure potentially defective mail-in and absentee envelopes and the casting of provisional ballots. So, that's the purpose of why I want to have a special meeting on the afternoon of Wednesday, October 16th.
You will advertise. All right, other, executive session was held on October 8, 2024 from 11:38 to 12:00 p.m. to discuss potential litigation.
And additionally, there was another executive session held this morning from, I believe, 9:02 to 9:30 to discuss potential litigation involving elections matters.
All right, visitors' remarks.
I just think, let me get this. Mr. Wood, I'm sure you didn't do this intentionally, and I think CJ will agree. Be very careful, I've asked to press the strike where my children go to school, please. And I'll tell you why. I've had my driveway posted online, pictures of it, four, two tires later, nails and everything thrown in there. Leave the children out of it. I had my five-year-old son who was taking a patriotic flag wave on his bridges by an ex-commissioner. This picture was posted on there, online. Leave the children out of it. You know, we see throughout the country where a lot of elected people, I don't care if it's a supervisor, maybe it's over in Monroe County, where people have gone in and done harm. Would you agree with me?
No, I agree.
So, I know you didn't do it for that reason. I would just ask you.
I would completely agree with you that leaving children.
Leave the families out of it, leave my home out of it. You know, I am made, I'm fully capable of taking anything that's, people want to try to do me harm, and, you know, I've had, because I, you know, I take a stand on things, I don't stick my finger in them. When, usually do, I just don't do it, I'll never do it, but you got to think, there's ramifications. I know you didn't mean it this way, and I'm not, I'm not mad, but I'd ask to press the strike where my children go to school, please. Thank you.
Definitely leave children out of your politics.
All right, Hugh.
Oh, okay, two things. First of all, thank, I've had the application for the systems board in for over a month now, and just wondering why we move on it the next meeting.
We will.
Is that for alternate?
Yes. We will certainly take that under consideration.
And then, the second thing is, just curious about the RFP.
I was hoping that we would get that, be able to advertise it this week, but because of a number of other things that are coming before us, we have not, but we will certainly want to get that.
Good. Okay.
All right, Walder.
Would you release to the public before you have the commissioners meeting and the RFP so that it can be?
Once we agree to put it on the agenda, yes.
The form of what will be considered at the, for, the form of the RFP that would be considered for adoption, you're asking for that draft to be put in?
What you would be putting out, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, the form of what would be, yes, I believe that was the expectation, is that it's going to be publicly provided.
Yep. I asked at the last meeting about the last time you guys had deliberations in public, had a couple of weeks to think about it. Do you know when the last time you had deliberations in public?
I, we conduct businesses, we've conducted business ever since I've been. We abide by the sunshine laws to the letter.
I wasn't asking about any of that, I was just asking about the last time you had deliberations in public?
We gather information on a day-to-day basis from all sources in all departments. I mean, it's just an ongoing part of what we do as commissioners.
Yeah, that's right, you gather information. Have you ever had deliberations in public?
I think that, all I would say is, people can go back and look through the videos, and the videos of the meetings will speak for themselves, so, that's, and whether people, whether in somebody's determination that's constitute deliberations in public or not, that's, you know, the videos are out there.
There's a legal definition for it, so.
Sure, sure, and people can look at it and determine whether that, in somebody's estimation, constitutes deliberations.
Okay, James.
As far as the Architect.
Yes.
Revising the scope of work.
Yes.
Is it possible that the Architect might somehow scale down what's being done, like maybe remove facilities or?
No, not remove facilities, just reformat some of the work product.
So, then it would be less expensive to do?
Yes, yes.
Did he give any examples?
So, we may, we may do some of the work ourselves as far as our, our maintenance department may be doing some of the work to offset some of the other work that a contractor may have to do, but that's all part of the review that he's doing right now.
Were you here for the bids?
I was here for the bids, but then right after, yeah, right after that, I left because I didn't think it was appropriate for me to be.
Yeah, but you saw when all the bids came in.
Right. They were high.
Yeah. Now, and that's why I made a comment that we need to move quickly because of building materials, so we can get it adjusted, what we're going to do.
Right, and it's just a thing is, are there areas where we could potentially, rather than hiring it out to be done by a third party, are there areas where we, as a county, could have our current employees do some of that work to help bring that, the scope down, and then hopefully commensurately the cost down?
But as far as what the building will look like, we're not changing any of that.
Yeah, we have some pretty good skilled people in our maintenance department, and Michelle brought it to our attention this morning, and I'd forgotten that we did all the work in Todd Carr's office, and we've done a lot. Now, there's, there's a lot of structural things that have to be done that we'd like an outside contractor here, but I'm sure there's a lot of things that our guys can do. They're pretty good, pretty good maintenance.
So, that's really the, that's really the only thing that would be revised, would be maybe getting some of the county to employ some of the work.
That's what we're looking at right now, what our Architect is looking at, yes.
I think that's the expectation.
Yep.
Okay, and then, is Louise Luck, is she an attorney?
Yes.
Okay, and then what's grant consulting services? I don't know, all I see is, does that have to do with the new grant that you got?
Which, which one did you recruit, James?
The third item on the agenda. For the public.
Court of Consulting Services.
Is that her business?
She's an attorney, yes, but she's going to be part, I'm sure it's part of that whole capital case.
I'm sorry, let's, Louise Luck, her business is court consultation services.
Okay.
And so, that's, I believe, the mitigation specialist?
Okay.
So, that's something, I believe, and maybe CJ knows better.
Relating to a capital case.
When you have a capital case, there has to be a mitigation specialist for the defense, right? And so, that's what that concerns.
And then, this, I'm pretty sure when you, you accepted concerns proposal for trauma-focused therapeutic services, that's got to be, that's going to be for children and youth services, right?
Have you got that?
For the staff at Children and Youth Services.
For the trauma-informed.
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 Yes.
Okay. Yes.
And then, what, do you happen to know what the agreement is between Bradford County Human Services and MGS Consulting, what they're, what they're going to do for the Bradford County Human Services?
We can get that to you, James.
Do you know what, what, Michelle, Mrs. Shadley said that you're amending the contract between the County Mental Health Program and Northern Tier Counseling for a scope of work change? I didn't know if that's.
It's actually extending the end date of the contract.
Okay. And, Lynette, I click on that to your wife, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that, that's everything.
All right, so I got a couple more things. I think we need to keep to hurricane, because Bob and I were just talking about both Milton and then Leanne, right? My daughter lives in Asheville, and it's what they've gone through, and I appreciate our emergency management, Bob and his, his crew more than ever, when I went to see Florida with DeSantis, I mean, they had everything ready to go, and as horrible as it is, I'm sure we're going to get it back, it's just a terrible situation.
We'll be able to tell later today, I think, the impact that's going to have for a lot more people, a lot smaller area.
But a lot of tornadoes spun up there.
Yeah, on my part. So, there's going to be a lot of damage.
There will be a lot of damage, a lot of people without power, a lot of, yeah.
My, my mom had a tornado go within a couple hundred yards of her house.
Most of them heated.
Evacuation got out. And from what I understood, the one, it was all bad, but the one positive is where it actually made landfall, it didn't hit Tampa quite as bad as they had anticipated, because it actually pushed water out of the bay rather than.
Yeah, the surge was last because it turned the right, and all the people in Sanibel and Captiva.
Yeah. Still devastating.
One other thing, I mean, we're, we're getting in the habit of month-long, I won't say so, honoring different, we had Pro-Life a month-long probably on October, I would just suggest that, so I was in a discussion where it was brought up, we talked about it, it might have been the three of us, I can't remember, maybe making November Veterans' Appreciation Month for our veterans, just a thought, here in Bradford County, where people can honor our veterans more than just a day for what they did for us. So just a thought.
The, I have one other thing. Renee, can you remind people deadlines and anything people should know, elections-related? Because we've got some deadlines coming up here in the month of October, can you talk to those?
October 21st is the deadline to register to vote and make any changes to your current voter registration. October 29th is the deadline to apply for mail-in ballot. And then, that mail-in ballot has to be returned to us by, it's on election day, number 10.
And they're posted on your, beyond our website?
Yes.
Yep.
Just make sure you fill out.
So, so, right, so we have currently, so to that question, Doug, what happens if somebody right now?
I'm not going to get into that now, okay? Just not going to do it. I'm just telling you, if you, if you're, if you're going to fill out a mail-in ballot for your first time, make sure it's done properly. If you have a question on how to fill out the envelope, call our Elections Office and make sure you do it correctly. Don't wait till it's filled out.
I'd love to know the answer to that question.
I'm not going to answer.
That's part of what this next Election Board meeting is going to be about.
You know, and I was just going to say that, because I get mad about it, once again, our state legislature did this to us back in 19. They never contacted, contacted Kirk towards elections, they ran it down our throat, and we're feeling our way as we go through. You know, in 2020, they were running the Supreme Court long after the elections to adjust stuff, and it's, and I go to a lot of meetings, there's a lot of confused people, all I am saying is make sure you make your vote count, take the responsibility, and make sure you fill it out. If you're not 100% sure, our Elections Office will help you. Because I, because this ballot-carrying stuff, it's been, so I'm not discussing it further.
I was wondering where it can stand as far as the, for what would happen if, if you reduce the hours of the Bradford County Library Group, and I know Mr. Gates was waiting for some information on this, I don't know what, it was like the State Elections Office.
It wasn't the Elections Office.
I mean, the State Library Office.
State Librarian.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering what you found out and what?
So the State Librarians, what the information was provided was that, according to the State Librarian, there's a statute that refers to a minimum hours for 45 hours based on a certain funding stream. There is a regulation that refers to 65 hours, and according to the State Librarian, they deem that the statute supersedes the regulation, and therefore, the minimum hours are 45. That's just what the State Librarian's interpretation of the law is.
And there are no libraries, the other eight libraries are counting, James, there's not one open more than in the 40s, in most of them, in fact, there's one at 35, so it goes 35 to 48, I think, and most of them are at 37 or?
So it'd probably be good to have a library that was open for a little bit longer, about people that don't have those regular hours.
Or it could be just shifting the hours of operation to more convenient hours for those that work on different shifts or whatever.
You're saying that the other eight are not?
Reducing would also reduce the number of activities in the evening, I suspect, because you wouldn't be able to have librarians there, so you wouldn't be able to have those services.
Also, the, so if, if this, the statute, so the statute, the statute supersedes the regulation.
According to the State Librarian, I can provide you.
So does that mean, so does that mean that, that you'll go ahead and reduce the hours for?
It's one of the discussions we're having.
I don't think.
There's been no determination.
I don't think, I don't think it's something that has been any, in any way decided or, you know, deliberated or anything. The point is, is here is, is that that was something, I think, that had been raised in some function, and I said I wanted to hear some additional information, that's the information that has come back.
Now, doesn't this, I'm not 100% sure on this, does the statute say that the State Librarian can adjust the hours?
You can take that up with our Solicitor, I'm unaware of that provision.
I thought that's where the regulations had come from, was the State Librarian deciding to go a step further than just what the, the code had said.
Renee, I was about to ask you a question, and I feel that it got interrupted. So if somebody submits, let's say somebody is unable right now to submit, or does, does something erroneous on their mail-in ballot, what's happening now?
Currently, the previous policy has been suspended, so we have some voters that do not have the opportunity to correct their ballot, their error, but has not been hashed yet. So that's what the discussion will be of the next special.
Okay.
All right. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.